Hi, Edjeworski. We're here at Town Hall for June 4th, 2018 Selectmen's Meeting along with the Finance Committee. We'll be discussing some strategies this evening with the Finance Committee on possibly having a special election and what to do with our free cash. Do we have any announcements?
I'd just like to mention that former Selectman Jan Adamski has passed away. Everyone sort of keeping his family in your prayers and thoughts.
Public forum, anybody here for public forum? The minutes, do we have anything for approval, Marlene, on the minutes from March 21st?
It says March 21st and April 25th. I don't have anything, no.
They're supposed to be for the 12th.
Oh, okay, for the 12th, okay.
Okay, we'll move along with posted business. Topic one, we'll hand this over to the Chair of the Finance Committee for preliminary discussion regarding use of proposed free cash and of holding a special town meeting. So, I'll give it to you, Darryl.
Good evening. I just, along with Cindy, I got to serve with Jan on the Board of Selectmen for several years and he will be surely missed. I was so sorry to hear about his loss. Jan was a good guy. He was one of the good guys, so. Anyway, so, our purpose for tonight on the Finance Committee is we'd like a little update on where we are with Schedule A, with the audit, which I know has started, but it would be good to get those updates. And then, we can go into a preliminary discussion about the town meeting that we're hoping to have, that the Selectmen are hoping to have on June 28th?
7th.
June 27th.
27th, Wednesday, the 27th. Actually, that's the only date the town clerk is available.
So, and hopefully by then, we'll have free cash, or some free cash certified. And I guess, just to let people know, as of today, there is zero free cash certified, so this is a preliminary discussion. We don't know how much we're going to get, and nor will I guess what we're going, or any of us, so.
And can I confirm my understanding, we would only have the special town meeting if there were free cash available, or we have other things to deal with?
Well, there are a couple of other articles, non-funding articles, that need to be taken up.
Okay.
So, and as I had, Darryl and I had talked earlier today, you know, depending on what is available for free cash, if there's articles on there that exceed, you know, what is available, then the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen would have to table those.
Right. So, Marlene and Derek, do you guys want to kind of just give us an update as where we are with, you know, last we kind of talked, it was actually town meeting, and I'm pretty sure, I'm hoping Schedule A has been submitted. I know there were a couple little hiccups along the way, but has it gone in, has the send button been pushed?
I don't know if Justin has submitted it yet. We're still working out a couple. What he's using is the Schedule A is not in draft form, but he wants to get the balance sheet, so he can, so he can, if the Schedule A doesn't match the balance sheet, it creates issues, so.
Right.
It's in draft form. There were a couple little issues, a couple little hiccups that we're chasing down. But we got most of the concerns that Justin wanted fixed, fixed. The auditors came in, they found a couple of things that they need some documentation on, explanations as to why certain things didn't happen, so we'll get those together for them tomorrow.
Okay.
Do we have the documentation?
I just found out about it like, literally like, an hour ago.
So you don't have that?
So they've asked a question as to, basically, it was when we pay loans, we bolt bands, we're supposed to pay off the bands, and then we reissue an amount. Evidently, it looks like we didn't have the reissued amount on the bill schedule.
Okay.
That piece didn't get in, so it overstated our cash.
Okay.
So they just need us to document, you know, okay, we do that piece.
Right.
What is the number supposed to be, so we can get it back in line.
Can you just kind of review, I've heard of a couple of things, but just for the benefit of the rest of the Finance Committee, some of the things in Schedule A that kind of needed to be resolved. I know there was some issues with some of the loans, was it the loans? Did I have that right?
The loans, Edwin and I ended up rebooking the loans.
Yeah, the, right.
We rebooked all the loans. There were some tax title issues, which affected.
Right, that's right.
Accounts receivable. So we had basically gone 90% through the recon, and then found out that there was some tax title adjustments, which you gotta start back from the beginning once you get those adjustments on the books, so. You got the tax title on the books, we reran the numbers. It's, you know, there's some work to do as far as, we know where the years are that are off, but we don't, we get that the auditors are here. You know, it's a time thing. So we've got to get something to the auditors, so that we can get something submitted for free cash.
Right.
We know that we're probably gonna take a little bit of more of a hit, because we want to get something for free cash as opposed to nothing. So, we're scrambling right now to, you know, any of those variances that we see that are high, if we can reduce them.
They go back several years, so this isn't just a '17 issue, this goes back?
This goes back, basically, '15, '16, and '17.
Okay, bummer.
But it sounds like your strategy is to address the biggest variances in order to satisfy the auditors a little bit more.
Exactly.
Right, I think that's a good strategy, because something is better than nothing.
And the other thing is, we need to identify the problems, you know? We've now identified the problems.
So going forward, you'll have a strat, you know, this is, you know, whatever you have to do to correct this going forward, we will be corrected. And it's not just you, it's the whole financial team that that kind of addresses. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's gonna stem back to those policies and procedures that DLS gave us, that we need to follow those right along.
Okay.
As long as there's a standard way of booking things, we can, we can find errors.
So the hope is, we get Schedule A and the balance sheet put forward, the auditor's here, it's gonna take a week, two weeks?
The auditors, they hope to have a draft next Monday, June 11th.
Next Monday, okay.
A draft report next Monday.
That's wonderful. And then, once we get a draft report, then that will go to Mary Jane Handy down at DOR, and hopefully, then DOR will?
They said it would take them two to three days, right?
Right.
That's right.
So, so which gets us into, you know, we can talk about, you know, if we have free cash, but because of the, what you have to do in order to set up for town meeting, you have to post the warrant by the 12th or the 13th?
The 13th, 14 days prior.
14 days prior, so that's next Wednesday, I believe, or Tuesday?
Right. 13th is next Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
So it has to be posted next Wednesday.
So, in a sense, we're gonna be potentially just a little bit, because probably by then, for sure by then, we're not gonna have an answer from DOR about how much free cash we'll have. And so, my suggestion is that we, as a Finance Committee, obviously, the Board of Selectmen, we've established maybe a priority list of if, then what?
Yep.
And, you know, and kind of start from there. I don't know, Paul, Sean, Betsy, you think that's appropriate?
Yeah.
Just any yes?
Question from the, from the gallery. So, at the, at some point within the next week to 10 days, there may be an indication from DOR what free cash might be available, maybe in draft form. Where will we, or, at that point, will we have any idea what the balance of free cash?
With what?
Yeah, I mean, you know, as Derek said, because of the fact that there's some open items.
They withhold free cash, yeah.
That they may still withhold some free cash from us. Will they be in a position to give us any indication as to how much that amount will be?
I think so.
So that we can do some sort of a cost-benefit analysis, and, you know, if there's, if that's material?
A cost-benefit analysis of what?
Well, in terms of the time it might take and the resources it might take to?
Oh, get that money back?
Yeah, to bring our books up to speed such that, Betsy, we would get that money back as well.
I think bringing our books up to speed is worth no money at all.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, right, but, you know, that's what I'm wondering about, really.
But still, that's.
And I think there, I would never speak for DOR, but based on the meeting that we went to, I think once DOR is comfortable with the changes that we've put in place by the financial team, by, you know, the accountant, the treasurer, the collector, the assessor, all that going forward, once they're comfortable that we are on the right track and doing the right thing, I think it's their intention to release all the free cash back to us.
They know that base date's coming, you know, July 1st, they're gonna really start to make a contribution here.
And, and, yeah, base date is already here, we, we've, you know, I mean, I would, talking off the top of my head, which is dangerous, but if '18, which soon as '17 is done, and these guys get going, the team gets going on '18, and if that's done, you know, I'll call a reasonable timeframe sometime early, by early winter, or?
Mid-September.
Mid, well, okay, yeah, that would be.
We have to get, that's what's gonna be done.
And that's when it's supposed to be done.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that being the case, if it's done by mid-September, we submit Schedule A, do what we're supposed to do at that point in time, I would, I am fully confident that that DOR would release, unless there was, and I don't think there's anything egregious out there, that DOR will release the rest of our free cash.
Is the free cash different from state aid?
Yes.
Yes.
And where are we on state aid? Are we getting that?
State aid, we have to get the draft audit report up to DOR.
So we still aren't getting it?
Well, Schedule A.
Or Schedule A.
Schedule A has to be submitted.
We haven't gotten state aid for three, four months?
March, we didn't get it in Mar, yes, in March.
March, April, May.
How are you doing with '18 right now?
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
I think that was your.
Eighteen, we, we're running the operations. We're gonna have to, basically, it's the revenue side, we're gonna have to put on the books.
The new chart of accounts, is that happening for '18? Does base day one's supposed to adhere to?
I think that's what they're shooting for, is '18, which, which is why we need all these balances, even if we have variances, we need to carry those forwards, so we can attract that stuff.
Have somewhere to start from.
Have they started, you have a lot of duplicate accounts, and have they started, kind of, have you guys started winding your way through and fixing?
So our trial balance, right now, runs about anywhere between 1,100 and 1,300 pages.
Oh.
A trial balance for our town, 300 pages tops.
Should be.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of duplication in just the way the accounting system was set up.
Right.
So there's gonna be some consolidation in the new chart.
Right.
Some, some accounting mechanics that allow us to, to move money between funds and use some accounting analytics to make sure that our trial balance is, is in balance.
And they were trying to switch us to the Massachusetts municipal accounting system.
That's what everything is based on, and it's basically a manual, which says that, you know, your, your revenue accounts are gonna start with a four, and then they'll tell you that, you know, from 4,000 to 4,100 be certain revenues. And then, by 100, 100 account increments, you know, some could be state, state aid, some could be loans, some could be grants, some could be federal grants, but it breaks it out. Right now, it, our chart is close, but it doesn't have the mechanics kind of behind the scenes to do the inter-fund transfers, and some of the more complicated accounting that we need to do for projects.
Plus, we have all those accounts for each department, right now.
Well, yeah, you'll have department numbers, which we love to break out for departments, but it's kind of like each department gets its own account receivable. There only needs to be one account receivable for the general fund, so, there's a lot of duplication.
All right. Any other questions in regards to that side of that?
But just, you know, back to, you know, we need to put down the revenue side of it. Unapplied revenue, we squared away in a couple of weeks, once we got that ball rolling. So once you get into a, a system of what we're looking for between my office and treasurer's office, I think that'll go pretty quick.
Yeah.
That's why I think that that September deadline is, is reasonable to hit. It'll be a busy summer, but I think it's reasonable to hit.
We would be very excited about that. And, and I think that's kind of an indication of, we've come a long ways in this process. We talked about this at this time last year, and there was, we wanted to hit September, but that wasn't even in the playbook, so.
Well, I think, and, you know, proof is in the pudding, so.
Yeah.
I think that we proved that through the unapplied revenue, we can do this. Whether it's unapplied or regular revenue to get on the books, it's the same reconciliation to get it on there.
Right.
We ran through 12 months in a couple of weeks. Might take us a little bit longer, because we've got more transactions, but.
Right.
I think it's doable.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Derek, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, I guess, if it's okay with, with everybody, maybe the next, we can talk a little bit about our priority list, and I know we all have a sheet in front of us that, that Marlene put, put down, and she gave to the Selectmen last week, and for us, us to look at, and I do believe.
I have a couple things I might want to add to the discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, and, and so, so without guessing how much, instead of guessing how much free cash, let's just talk about what's most important, what we might have to live without, so to speak. And certainly, top on my list personally is fiscal '18 issues that need to be resolved. We know that there's a deficit in the health insurance that we have to pay. Smith-Vogue, we're, we will owe them $30,000, $30,586.
What is that?
Transportation.
Oh, yeah.
Transportation.
Tuition, or just transportation?
I think it was transportation.
Tuition.
Oh, it's just one budget, but I'm not sure if it's just, I think it is.
A student change, then that's all it takes.
Right, right.
That's the line usually, is tuition and transportation, so you can't really tell.
Yeah. So, and then, of course, we've got the professional services, which is base date accounting. That's $30,000 there, and so.
We had talked about the possibility of using, I don't know what's the word, leftover money to address these things rather than free cash.
That's, that, that, yes, we had, and I think it's, there are some other, I know we have some other things that we need to deal with, Lydia's, the voting machine, which she can take care of within her budget, but Marlene's got some, is it your IT account, Marlene?
Budget as of.
You're gonna be.
Yeah, as of May 11th, I was just looking at the last expense report, as of May 11th, it was just about $900 in, in deficit.
Okay.
And I have a few, a couple of bills sitting on my desk.
And June too, right?
In June too.
So maybe $2,000?
Um, I, we've had, incurred some additional expenses, because we've exceeded our hours.
Oh, okay.
We exceeded our hours.
We're paying overtime now?
You pay, well, yes. The, the rate increases, and they also have an after-hours rate. I don't want to be so.
It gets you one way or another, don't they?
Correct, yeah.
So what might be your guess?
So we could be, we could be looking at, at $4,000 or $5,000.
Okay.
Now, when we're talking leftover money, are we looking at all the accounts?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this is money that.
Do we have a, do we have a list of who's got what?
Yes.
We don't.
We will, but it's a little too early right now.
We don't really know.
Right.
You don't know what, I don't know what invoices are out there.
Right, just looking at things that weren't there.
Right, what's the money that's already been spent that we don't know about, and what's the money that's gonna be spent that we don't know about yet?
On that point, we'd also mention putting a freeze or something a little softer than a freeze.
We had had a discussion, and that would be up to the board to do that, to kind of, yes, yeah, we had a discussion where anybody that wants, they, they could, in theory, set a dollar amount, and I, say $5,000, I don't know. And so, any expense that's going to exceed that would have to be, or would, you know?
Do we know that you can actually do that?
I, I don't know, we talked about it.
I mean, I know you could probably do it for department heads, but can you actually stop independently elected people from spending money that was appropriated at a town meeting under their budget?
That's a completely different, you're, you're exactly right, I don't know.
I don't think you can, I mean, I don't know, but my guess would be that, I don't know how you'd do that.
Might be.
Once, because town meeting does the appropriating, the Board of Selectmen, so once it's appropriated, unless you're a department head who answers to the Board of Selectmen, then theoretically.
Right.
The money's to be spent for the purpose that it was appropriated for.
It was.
Regardless of what we think about it.
Right, it was more or less a discussion that we had in hopes that we could convince people to, you know, some, sometimes there's a race to the finish with your, with your budget.
And we don't need that necessarily.
Huh?
And we don't need that.
No, we do not need that.
With all of that, under, under normal circumstances, department heads and or elected officials, or whatever, would have their financial reports in front of them.
They know.
At least through, maybe, May at this point.
They, they have their expenses in front of them, they've got those.
Their expenses, their budget.
They do, they get those.
Yeah, yeah, they, that, that is solid.
That's good, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, Lydia?
I, I can only speak for myself, but I have an Excel spreadsheet, so I know exactly what I have left.
I know.
I'm sure there are other.
So I don't know what other departments do, or.
Right.
Other elected officials do, but I, yeah.
Department heads have been asked at the last several department head meetings to, you know, be tracking their budgets, and if they anticipate any shortfalls, they need to notify Derek and myself.
No, I'm, I'm talking about being able to give some sort of report to the Finance Committee about what their balances are at a certain point. Like, you know, you can't get them from Derek, because 2018 is not.
Oh, you're talking about revenue reports?
No, I'm talking about expense reports.
Expense reports.
Oh, we get expense reports.
Expense reports.
We get expense reports from the accountant on a regular basis.
Why were you just saying that you can do expense reports, because 2018 wasn't.
No, expense reports, the revenue reports are what, what, what we're challenged.
We're not getting the revenue reports.
Yeah, it's, the expense reports, we're, we're pretty solid on those numbers.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, the, and so, you know, we, there's some money that we have in finance reserve that we haven't spent, that, that we can surely spend, so that would be.
$5,000?
$3,000.
You have.
We have.
Spent some money out of reserve, took care of an insurance invoice.
It was like a $1,500.
What did we have, 40 or 35 to start with?
35 usually.
I think I remember from town meeting, it was 35.
$35,000, so we, so we might still have, you know, $30,000 left in that.
So what is the?
Can you find that out?
30,000.
It wasn't.
Fiscal year '18's a $30,000 budget for the reserve fund, you think, 30,000?
30,000. So what is the likelihood of our, having enough information to be able to pay these fiscal year '18 outstanding costs with leftover money? What, what are the odds of that happening?
Before town meeting?
We don't know.
Before, before the end of the year? I don't think we've ever done that before the end of the year.
We never do that until July.
Yeah, it doesn't happen until July.
Right.
Okay, so, I, I'm not asking my question correctly, so.
I know, Betsy's asking.
So, do we have to rely on free cash to pay these bills, because there's no way we're gonna get a hold of leftover money, or it's possible?
You're talking about any future shortfalls in the current operating budget. Well, and as I said, you know, I've been asking department heads to, you know, they should be tracking their expenses, and haven't, they, they should know by now if they're going to come up short.
And what about with these shortfalls, how are we likely to cover these costs?
With these that are identified on that sheet?
Yes.
That.
We could.
If you, if you don't cover the amount of free cash now, then you just roll the dice and wait till July, and you see if you have the money.
And then what happens?
Well, the, the.
You pay the bills or you don't, depending on whether you have the money.
Then the.
I mean, there's no way to know until you close out the year.
Yeah, no, I know.
You know what I mean, yeah.
I've never gone through this part of the year, that's why I'm asking.
The, the other option we have, and we haven't done it, is we could elect to take $20,000 out of finance reserve and pay the insurance bill right now.
You, you could do that, the, the only issue with that would be that, when you come to the end of the year, and I don't remember exactly what's happened in the past, you know, but there's, there's, there's things you can do with leftover money and manipulations of it.
Yeah.
In terms of what you can pay with what, and how you do it, and having money in finance reserve is really flexible compared to maybe some other things that you might have to do.
Right.
So you, you're better off if you have some money like that left over, and don't spend it all right now. It makes it a little easier at the end of the year to make those things, transfers match up.
So right now, we have $27,672 in finance reserve.
Okay.
And there might have been another, this is as of 5/11, so I think there might have been one more that went through.
Yeah.
And, you know, what I could do also is top of the department heads, we have a meeting this week, and ask them if they anticipate turning back money, and approximately how much.
If they turn back money, that money's not available for us to spend, because that's all part of fiscal '18, which has to be closed out, it's gotta be audited, and it'll, I mean, that's.
We can year-end transfer.
The Board of Selectmen and Finance.
From one budget to one other?
Yes.
Yeah, from one budget to the other, the last two months, we have the, we have the ability to do that.
Without town meeting?
Yes.
May, June, up till July 15, 14.
And it used to be limited to a certain amount of money, and then the governor's municipal modernization act eliminated that, so now you can do whatever.
So would we?
Excludes schools, though, doesn't exclude schools.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would we agree that on this list, the health insurance is probably most critical?
Yes, and, and, you know, I identified what I thought was significant here, and, you know, I know we're gonna have a shortfall in the town hall IT office supplies, so, you know, we may need to have the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, you know, transfer monies from one department to another. But these were significant enough that I, you know, just not.
I don't think.
Confident that we can handle it.
We, in past years, we haven't handled this.
No.
That's 30, 60, there's close to $81,000 there that.
Right.
I don't remember.
You might have done, we might have done 35 or 40, $50,000, including everything.
Right.
Little $500,000 thing, you know, like, and those things are gonna come up anyway. They're not here, they're not listed here.
This year's.
But they're gonna be out there somewhere.
Yeah, the Smith-Vogue tuition, transportation, that's, that's a significant increase. I mean, we have had maybe a 14, $16,000 shortfall.
But 30, almost 31,000 was a lot.
Yes, yeah.
But I, but I guess what I'm saying is, of these FY 2018 problems, would we agree that health insurance is the one that if we didn't pay it, we'd be in really deep water?
I would say we're in deep water by not paying any of these.
Correct.
Really? I mean, because I don't think Bay State Municipal Accounting is gonna stop working for us. I mean, they know they're going to get the money, whether they get it now or they get it in October, right?
Well, then it becomes a prior year bill though.
Yeah.
Because it's work performed in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
If we appropriate it at a later date, we can do that, it's a prior year bill.
This is for services rendered already, this is separate from your seventy.
Right.
That's right, this is just eighteen.
And in my mind, Bay State is the people that DOR is most comfortable with that is helping bring us to a better state of affairs.
Yeah, also, I think that when, going forward, if they're doing things for us, when they calculate what the cost of that will be, I would not want them to calculate in the cost of not getting paid into that. You know what I mean?
I totally agree.
Like, oh, we have to charge that bill more because chances are it'll take a year and a half for us to get paid, and that would be.
No, I absolutely agree, I'm just saying, if there's a limited amount of money available to pay these bills, like, if we only have twenty-seven, it's probably not true, but if we only have twenty-seven thousand dollars.
You're right.
What would we pay first?
I would pay health insurance first. No, you're absolutely right.
That's the question.
Yep, no, that's a great question.
I would pay all of them if I could, but.
And maybe we can.
And maybe we can, but I would just say, you know, health insurance would be the first bill I would pay.
So mark that number one.
That's what I did.
Yeah.
What would be the second bill we would pay? I mean, we could just, you could start spreading a little money everywhere. Well, the school transport, I mean, do they stop working with us?
Yes, but again, that's not important, you know, it really, the board and finance would be really important.
Well.
I think you have to figure out a way to pay those bills.
Yeah, I think these bills, yeah, I mean, one way or another.
You're gonna pay them eventually.
Yes, and what I'm trying to figure out is what we should throw finance reserve money at and what we should wait for free cash.
There's not that much balance to reserve, so I mean, we could pick, what, one of those?
But I guess, I guess what's the harm of just waiting, just paying them out of free cash if you can? So see what your free cash is, pay them out of free cash if you can, all that would happen, so let's just say, for argument's sake, at the end of the year, you found all that money and the budget was returned through various.
Would just fall to free cash.
It would just be free cash in a future year.
Just falls to free cash and spend it.
You know what I mean, you just spend it at a future date. So, I mean, to me, it seems like if you have that much free cash, then that's your first thing, is pay all those bills. If you don't have that much free cash, then you go into a special town meeting and you gotta figure out where you're gonna get the money to pay those bills, you gotta pay them somehow.
These have to be paid. And, you know, my question.
If you don't have the free cash, where's it gonna come?
Right.
You're gonna have to get it from somewhere.
That's, and that's what I'm trying to understand is, when will we know if there's any leftover money, not until July?
Not until July.
So it's not even worth talking about.
When you say leftover money from the current budget, Derek will have an idea in the next couple of weeks. Because departments, you know, at this point. Yeah, at this point, departments, if they're purchasing anything, ordering, their invoices have to be dated for the month of June, so. Departments are gonna know, they have a good sense as to whether they're gonna be turning back money or how much more they need to spend from their budget.
So a different way to have this conversation is to say, if we got free cash, then the first thing we would do is pay all the two thousand eighteen bills before we did anything else. And then we would move on to two thousand nineteen.
Makes sense to me. Yep. You've already spent the two thousand eighteen money.
Yeah.
So these are all firsts.
And so, and my question to Marlene this afternoon was, and is that gonna be enough? You know, is there anything out there that we haven't found yet? And that's to Derek too, I mean.
The one thing we had a question about was, I think it was John Sullivan who did an audit for us, and have we completed paying him?
We have.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a critical timeframe around special town meeting? I mean, it's in.
Yeah.
Free cash expires June thirtieth. It expires FY seventeen.
Seventeen's free cash.
It goes to the following year. Okay, so, all right, so if you know what it is three days before it expires, then you can use it, okay.
If it's certified.
Yeah, okay, in our case.
Certified, and if not, then we would hopefully, yeah, we would have to wait until next year to. And these would be, these would be. So, moving on, so do we all agree that the roughly eighty-one thousand dollars in fiscal eighteen bills would be the first thing we would pay, given any free cash?
I do agree with that, but here's my question. The town clerk has asked for fifty-two hundred dollars for a new voting machine, which she has in her budget. Is that right, fifty-two?
Yeah.
And the question is, do we want to approve that, that's a fiscal year eighteen thing? Or do we want to not approve that because that might be money we could use to pay more critical bills? I mean, every five thousand dollars counts.
I mean, it's an election machine, she needs it, it is, I mean, it's equally as critical as.
Oh, it is, it is, it's just that we haven't actually bought it yet. I'm sort of imagining.
We do have one, that is functioning.
Correct.
It may be not reliable as we like.
I have three thousand dollars that I didn't expect I was gonna have on a salary line. So, and the price of the machine came down, and we're skipping to item number three. And so it's like trying to take advantage of this opportunity and everything kind of coming together and being able to get it now because the machine we have is right now worth five hundred dollars on a trade-in. They discontinued it in two thousand fifteen, and they were only gonna cover it for another four years, that's to two thousand nineteen, so.
There were problems last year with it.
Yeah, I've had, yeah, several issues with it stopping, or at least the screen going down in the middle of an election.
So it's like having a used car, you get some money right now, if you wait too long, you don't get any money for it, right?
You're not gonna get anything because they're done with it and I won't be, I won't have anything to trade.
Can we lease that?
I think the positive thing is too, though, that she has the money in her budget this year.
Correct.
Till June thirtieth.
Not that I'm aware of.
They're leasing? They're not, they're not super expensive. Five grand, so she's, so it was five grand?
Fifty-two hundred, yes. I mean, I'm not morally opposed to buying voting machines, I think it's a great thing. And Lydia has managed her budget carefully, and this is also a wonderful thing. I'm just saying, if we are in that terrible position where we don't get any free cash certified and we're scrambling for money to pay this eighty thousand dollars worth of bills, will we go like this to ourselves if we gave away five thousand dollars tonight? That's my question, I mean, it's just like paying bills at home, it's the same thing.
And in one of this, so in her line, like, the twenty-five hundred from the town clerk expense that she wants to transfer, that's, that we can do, but the twenty-seven hundred dollars that state reimbursed for extended voting hours, I'm not really too sure she can spend it on anything else but something in her budget, I'm not sure we can.
That's how we get our voting booth.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure we can transfer that to a different account.
No, no.
No, no, this is.
He was responding to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Am I correct, Derek, Marlene?
Yeah, okay, so we don't have five thousand dollars, we have twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah. So, I mean.
And then to Sean's point, or Paul's. Can you, do you have the authority to vote over town meeting over a budget that's supervised by an elected official?
Oh, this?
Yeah. Because it's the town clerk's money.
Yeah, but in this.
Yeah, but it's in the salary line.
It's in, you still need, you still need a vote from the selectmen and the finance committee to make the transfer.
To transfer, right.
Yeah, so.
If it was in your expense line, you could probably spend it, but if it's in your salary line.
Right.
I mean, just put it on salary.
I mean, and I don't, you know, I don't.
I'd hire people to count the votes by hand.
So, I mean, so, since we're here, do we wanna take action on this tonight and do this, or do we wanna wait until next week? This, again, the selectmen have to vote on, and we would have to vote on this transfer to make this, to make this happen. And, and the benefit to doing it now is that Lydia can get the ball there because there are certain things that you have to, that have. Even if we get the ball rolling now, this machine will not be ready for the primary, it will only be ready for the November election.
Right, the selectmen have to take a vote to discontinue the current voting equipment and to authorize the new equipment to be used starting with the November sixth election. I have to notify the state that the selectmen took that vote by, I think it's like July ninth. So that's the, that's the pressure I'm under, it's a hundred and twenty days before the next election, you've gotta let the state know you're changing your ballot.
You need to know by July ninth.
Tabulator, well, I need to have a selectman that have had a meeting to take a vote and.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can, we can do this next week too, it doesn't matter, but.
Are we gonna have more information?
Are we gonna have more information? No?
No, we're not gonna have any more information.
And that's fine.
Lydia, will this be readily available, this isn't something that gets back order, it takes months to come in, right? This is something that's available right away.
I haven't heard of anybody having issues with it.
Don't wanna run up against, you know, dates, which should be something that's thirty days away or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's my anticipation, that I'll have it, it'll be sitting here and I can't use it until November.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
And if you look at, if you're talking about this, or this is what you're motioning, I actually asked for three thousand to be transferred because my printer is acting up and I don't have enough money to buy another printer at the moment. So there's a five hundred dollars in there, so that's why I was looking for the three thousand dollar transfer in case I have to buy a printer. If I can limp along and it lasts until July, then I'll buy it with FY nineteen money and you'll get the five hundred dollars back. Where's the five hundred dollars coming from, Lydia? Out of that salary line. Oh, the salary line, okay. So it's three thousand out of that salary line. Okay.
Not twenty-five hundred?
Correct. Three thousand out of the salary line.
And twenty-seven hundred dollars out of the. Account four oh three.
Is that a printer that's just dedicated to your office, or is that a shared printer? Seems awfully expensive. For printers nowadays, I mean.
Yeah, five hundred dollars?
Yeah. I can get it, you can get it.
It also has a quote. I was looking at them and they were like between three and four. Okay, so you're looking for a motion?
Well, yeah. Was your request for both the printer and the voting machine?
Not my original email to you a couple of weeks ago, but in here.
On the top page with the, yeah.
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 Okay.
So it's really fifty-seven hundred.
The only, the only issue with that would be, unlike the voting machine, if the printer broke and you replaced it and that caused you to overspend your expense line.
Then we would give that money.
Take it out of finance.
Right.
Yeah, I could, I could probably, the only, the only, that I'm not sure I can do is the dog program. The dog program only prints to that printer.
No, no, I'm saying, though, it's, a broken thing is an unanticipated expense. So if you, immediately, the next day, went out and bought it and that caused you to overspend your expense line, you could get approval from the finance committee to take the money out of finance reserve because it's an unanticipated expense, unlike the voting machine, which is just something we wanna do.
If you wanna take the five hundred dollars, that's fine.
Yeah, if we have to.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, I'm limping along and having to, it won't go out of tray one like it's supposed to go out of tray one and, yeah.
Right. And it's the whole unanticipated. Nature of it, and certainly if it does break, Sean has just told you what to do.
Okay.
By one.
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion to transfer fifty-two hundred dollar, well, twenty-five hundred dollars from line twenty-one to the town.
That's what it says.
That's what it says here.
Line twenty-two.
Oh, it says.
It says line twenty-one right here on my paper.
From line twenty-two to line twenty-one.
Okay.
Yes? From line twenty-two.
Twenty-two was the salary line.
Twenty-two.
To go to expenses.
So twenty-five hundred dollars from line twenty-one to line twenty-two.
Twenty-two to twenty-one.
Twenty-two to twenty-one.
Right, and then, and then.
Okay, and then two thousand seven hundred dollars from account four oh three. No, you, you don't have to transfer that.
No, right.
All you're, all you're doing is transferring twenty-five hundred dollars from twenty-two to twenty-one.
I'd make a motion to transfer twenty-five hundred dollars from line twenty-two town clerk staff to line twenty-one town clerk expense.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now do we have to take? Yeah, you actually have a. You have a motion on the next page. Okay, so.
That's the motion you're gonna. You all don't, doesn't the selectmen have to vote as well to do the transfer?
Yes, they do, so you have to vote the same motion we did.
Right, so.
The motion that you have in front of you has to do with changing the equipment, but you can do that as soon as you.
Well, we have to do the finances first.
The transfers to be approved.
So I'll make a motion to move from line twenty-two town clerk staff, it'd be twenty-five hundred dollars to line twenty-one.
Okay, I'll second that.
And I have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Now, we gotta move on, the next motion for you, right?
Right, and then that would notify the state that you.
I'll make a motion to discontinue use of our LHS AccuVote SN number forty-five six thirty-two voting tabulator and to begin implementing the use of a new LHS image case electronic vote tabulator beginning with the November sixth, two thousand eighteen state election. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So be. Motion carries. Okay, so.
That's a motion to discontinue effective November sixth use of that machine?
So, I guess next, our discussion needs to go to.
Fiscal year nineteen?
Fiscal year nineteen, a priority list for that. And did you have, and Betsy, did you have anything to add to Marlene's? So let's just review those for, so we've got operating budget, I don't remember the actuarial study, what is that?
We did not fund that in the operating budget for nineteen, that was something that Derek and I discussed after the budget had already been put together and I had been made aware that the town must do this in fiscal year nineteen.
What is it?
This is the OPEB, the other post.
Post benefits.
Other, yeah.
You're talking foreign language.
So, so we have all these.
They've been on it for the last five years.
We have all these benefits that are unfunded right now, and basically, it's a change in the Gatsby statement to make sure that we're putting that on our balance sheet, which is going to be, it's big, huge.
If we don't do it, I understand we'll be penalized for that.
Yes.
We could be penalized for it if we don't do it, so we have to have an actuarial study done first.
And this is required by, by who is this required by? State, state requires this?
This is, yeah, it's a.
And since we didn't put it in the budget.
We need to amend the budget.
You have to amend the budget because even if next year we decided, hey, let's go to the finance committee and get thirty-five hundred dollars, unfortunately, our answer would be, this was never in the budget, we can't, right?
Because it's not a capital expense, you mean?
No, because it's not even, because it's not even a line item in the budget, it's nothing they overspend.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist.
So why is it a study? Because what they're, is they're trying to figure out what the liability is to put on the balance sheet?
Because what they're, is they're trying to figure out what the liability is to put on the balance sheet?
It's an, it's an, it's really an analysis, an actuarial analysis of...
Yeah.
Is that, is that an annual exercise, or is that just something that'll be done every several years?
I'm not su, I'm not sure on, on...
I would, I would not imagine.
I think it's like a three or five year.
Even, even like retirement systems only do it every three years.
Yeah.
Well, then what we could do, rather than amend the, well, we would still amend the budget.
Still amend the budget.
We could add it to the, let's see, we have, it was auditors, we call it accounting professional services. That's the auditor and then we could plug it in there.
Absolutely.
But, regardless, we have to plug it in somewhere.
Right.
Once, once we have the money. Okay, so the next thing that Marlene has on the list is reinstating some of the operating. Is that all the operating budget money?
That's all the operating budget, all the departments that...
Including the school?
Yes.
And you came up with 54,000?
So I, for the school, I'd like to have a conversation with John Robert, school superintendent, John Robert. So this is bringing it back to level, well, and that's just what I thought.
Yeah.
Well, we restored some of the school money.
We did, we put a little more back in there. So to bring it back to, my understanding is to do level...
Right.
Level six.
Is it leveling everybody, including DPW, or does this not include DPW?
This does include a 1%, giving, returning 1% to the DPW.
But it's not level 5 for DPW.
It, right, it would not be.
Be, you know, my, my point in that is that, you know, I think Phil decided that he could take the 2% because they are not going to do the cleaning service here. And so I'm, I, I see no reason to reinstate that. Until next year, obviously, after the work's done, we're gonna need it cleaned, but, so... Okay.
So that number was 54,225, Marlene?
Yes.
Okay.
And then...
Needs to be amended.
Well...
Right, so that's the total of all the general government, public safety, education, public works, and human services and recreation.
And you'll confirm with John, just to make sure that that number is...
I will, I just want to make sure he's comfortable with that.
Can I ask a general question about this? Not specific to DPW or the school?
Yeah.
So, basically, we're talking about creating a $55,000 hole in next year's budget before we start putting it together.
Absolutely.
And that's the effect of this.
Right.
Because if you take this money out of free cash that you cut this year because you didn't have the money in the operating budget to fund it this year, you're still not gonna have the money in the operating budget to fund it next year.
Right.
Unless you take it out of free cash again.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking about it in terms of, like, where, when and where do you stop doing that? Like, how do you do that? Are you gonna get revenue growth? Is, there's some, in the past, when we've done this, like, it's somewhat been with a plan of like, oh, hey, this new thing is about to come online, or there's gonna be this new growth in revenue for the town.
Well, one of the...
And we don't have that, it's, it's not like we're even, or we were taking cuts in state aid. So you could say, all right, well, we're probably not gonna take cuts in state aid forever. At some point, the economy's gonna turn around, state aid's gonna get better, we're gonna have more money. This is sort of in anticipation of nothing.
Well, the only thing, I did sit down with Edwina to look at how much we're paying for loans, and it's going between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20, so not 19. But between the following years, we would get back about $80,000.
Well, because things come off?
Yes.
Yeah. If we don't borrow anymore.
If we don't borrow anymore, right.
Which we've never been able to do. I'm not saying we couldn't, I'm just saying, historically, we've always replaced whatever came off because we have infrastructure that's...
So...
This is all hypothetical, all these conversations right now are hypothetical anyway, so...
And I, and I absolutely agree with you, Sean, I, you know...
Just for me, that would be a low priority.
I agree.
Because you're, if we were just having a conversation of saying, would you fund that out of free cash?
Well, it all depends on how much, if there's a windfall, then, yeah, why not?
Yeah, but as I, I agree with Sean, it would be low on my list.
It's gonna be tough.
Yeah, exactly.
So, let's just...
Normally, those items aren't funded from free cash, I mean, that's from taxation usually.
Right.
Right.
And so, you know, you're, you're starting to build a little bit of a, not necessarily precedent, but, you know, we've always made the argument that free cash goes to capital items and to, you know, really must do kinds of things like restoring the stabilization account or something, but... I feel like one of the times we have done that have really been like, you know, oh, we took out one year, you know, this year, a $30,000 cut in state aid.
Yeah.
So can we backfill that? Yeah, and then next year we'll see.
But this is a trend.
But this is not that, this is just, yeah.
Okay.
This is an expense.
Right. So, next on the list, and, and, and really, I bring this up in no particular order, but would be the reimbursing that ambulance surplus, that, that $40,000 that was inappropriate was, how do I say it? Not inappropriate, it was...
Directed to free cash.
It dropped to free cash.
It dropped to free cash, it was an accounting error, so, prior accountant, actually. So, so, you know, it is what it is.
What's the impact of doing it?
The impact of doing it is it makes it easier for Stephen to do his budget.
Well, and to be self-sufficient.
To be self-sufficient. Ambulance is pretty much self-sufficient and...
Do we know how much is in ambulance surplus now?
We just, we...
Just enough to cover the budget for six months.
Yeah, that's right, and so...
And this would basically allow him to cover the budget for the remainder of fiscal year 19.
And, and for, for planning for 20, then in theory, he would have enough.
Right, so when we went to town meeting, we had $45,000 available to, to fund ambulance. We amended the budget, or I should say...
52 or something?
But it's not enough.
Right, oh, you know what, I have it right here, right with me, I thought it was 55.
Not only revenue coming in, but wasn't Stephen talking about increasing rates?
What, yeah, I guess I'm...
And we have to pull $40,000 out of surplus to fund the current year's budget, then what's happening?
So, so what...
We have a revenue problem.
It's like they just canceled its ambulance and...
No, the, the reason we, it's not a revenue, it's not a revenue issue. This is, this was an, this truly was an accounting issue.
Right. So if this 40, so basically, when we went to town meeting, we only had $45,000 available in that fund. If this hadn't have dropped to free cash, it would have been $85,000.
And that would have been enough to cover his home?
And that would have been enough. The, the hitch is that we need to have it available as of the town meeting vote, so he doesn't get May and June, per se, revenues...
Right.
To expend in the next year's budget, he's got kind of a two-month lag.
Right. But, so what, I mean, so if it's ambulance surplus, that implies that it's excess revenue from previous years that created it, right?
Correct.
So if he has excess revenue every year, theoretically, because somehow the money got created, then what do you, then, then how come this year you suddenly need to spend half of it? Hmm? Then, I, I just don't understand how you come up short. I could see how you have a cash flow problem.
That's temporary. But he was short last year, too.
That's right.
This is, this has been...
The last few years, we have not had the money available when we've appropriated it.
We've, we've done that incorrectly, right.
So we've needed, he's needed to gain those reserves and, and put them in the bank, per se, so that we can vote them at town meeting.
Right.
This, if this had been included in his reserves, he would have had what he needed.
Yeah.
And then the ambulance, it does be, it is self-sufficient, it's not...
Okay.
It is totally self-sufficient, it's a timing issue with the revenues and when we vote the revenues. This gets him back on track, so come annual town meeting...
So he's gonna run short before we can appropriate the new revenues, that's the...
Correct.
So it's a cash flow problem.
Yes, cash flow.
So, and if there is, if there's an October town meeting, we could, in theory, take care of that then, instead of taking care of it in June.
Would that be 18 free cash?
Huh?
Would that be 18 free cash?
Yes, right, yeah, we could, we could do that, but... So the next on the list was the $46,000 that we owe community preservation. And we did make, at least I made a commitment to try my best, to try our best to pay that back.
Wouldn't be the first thing on my list.
Right. Yeah, it's all, how much, yeah.
I mean, it's on the list, but wouldn't be the first thing on my list.
It's not.
So the next is the $24,900 for the 350th.
Can we, before we do that, can we just talk a little bit about stabilization?
Oh, yeah.
Just because it relates back to that.
Yeah.
So, what, the 279, 291, 49 represents...
That's the amount that has been transferred out of the stabilization fund, that's the total.
Yeah, so...
The last, the last three years.
And then 134,300 is out of us town hall stabilization. So the only, the only question I would have then about the $25,000, give or take, if we had gone to town meeting and said, we want a two-thirds majority to vote to pull $25,000 out of stabilization fund to pay for the 350th.
What would they have done?
What would they have done?
They would have paid it.
You think?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, to me, because that's what we're doing, you're taking it out of stabilization.
Yeah.
I mean, essentially.
Yeah.
And there's just a lot of talk about how much money has come out of stabilization and...
Yeah.
What is that 25 for? Anyone have a...
Hmm... Just, just everything big.
All secretary.
A lot of startup money.
Startup money, they're, they're raising money for a parade and for a bunch of other events.
Startup. I think they're assuming, I haven't met with them, or, but I think, based on what Evan was saying the other night, they're assuming that they're gonna offset this significantly by doing fundraising, donations, or whatever, but they, they like to have this there just in case, they have cash flow problems, too. To get this thing on the, on a roll.
They're, just to kick it off, they have a New Year's Eve bash scheduled and they're looking to make a big portion of that back on that one, one night.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's in the mix, and then we, we've touched on stabilization. You know, I think what Marlene put down was, you know, perhaps putting $50,000 in each one of the stabilization accounts. Certainly...
Derek, what's the balance in town hall stabilization now? Yeah, I mean, I, I'll, I really try to figure out, is that... I think that's all, I think that's about the balance in both of them.
Yeah, I think it's, where I get that from.
It's, we had it for town meeting, I don't remember, I, I didn't bring any of my, you're better than me. I didn't bring any of my stuff.
Yeah, I didn't either. I should.
Maybe we tried to leave a hundred grand or so in each one.
I think that's what I...
Maybe 7 in one of them.
And, and I guess, my, my question for everybody when it comes to stabilization is, is perhaps trying to at least establish, you know, I, I don't think we can put it all back at once, but can we try to put some back every single year, then we'll, we'll get that money put back in? Would, would be the way I would look at it, you know, I wouldn't want to take all that in one shot and put it back in, because then we'd have to go back to the town to take money out for other... So, it's just my thought on that.
Yeah, well, certainly not if you have bills that you're not paying, you know, then...
Doesn't make sense.
Can't do that, yeah. It's a rainy day fund, we had some rainy days and we're, we need to build that back up.
Yep. And maybe, maybe depending on what we get, maybe 50,000 isn't the right number, maybe it's 25,000, but, you know, who knows?
Maybe it's a hundred.
A gesture.
For sure. Stabilization.
You know, I mean, it's somewhere in my priority, in, you know...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm only curious about the balance in town hall stabilization because I'm wondering if it's, if it's worthwhile to, you know what I mean? Like, if we should just put it all back in.
Put it all in one, right.
Yeah, and then, you know...
I never quite understood why we needed both, but...
It's, essentially helps to off, you know, like, it's out there to help offset expenses, these big projects that come out. I was, I was trying to send a message to the state AARB board as well, that we were definitely committed to doing this second phase and, and...
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Had some money aside for it.
So, so then, Marlene's got money for potential, maybe colas for the non-union?
So, Marlene, I just have a question about the numbers you wrote down here. The second number, $15,340, is if we were to give cola raises to non-union hourly employees, excluding salary positions.
That would include salary, right.
And the salary positions are just the department heads?
That's right.
Okay, so the number above it is $25,000, does that include department heads?
That would include department.
Okay, because I want that number, all right, thank you. All right, and, yeah, and then there are the capital projects that Paul had told us about.
The paramedic equipment, still not really clear about how that went down. So now, two years ago, there was a $50,000 request, correct? And we broke it out into five years? The math doesn't work, it was like...
Right, so he's leasing equipment. I didn't know that at the time last year, so that's what he's breaking out, is the cost to lease equipment.
And it was 13,000 a year, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's why...
Why does it say 20,000?
I'm not really sure.
Can you confirm that?
I don't have...
Is a lease a capital expense?
Yes, yes.
Could be.
No, not necessarily, I mean, it's...
Well...
That lease is in DPW and that's not a...
And as a bonus, in fact, a lot of it is, most leasing expenses are in our operating budget.
Well, and, and the vehicle lease is in the operating budget, however, he does, doesn't still go to the capital planning committee?
It's not really, calling that a lease, though, is really, it's not exactly a lease. You own the stuff at the end. Yeah, but, but lease, you budget, payment of it each year in the operating budget. Right, and then, yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, the reason I think you could consider capital potentially would just be because, at the end, you have the stuff. You don't give it back. Well, that and the magnitude of the asset when you lease it. Right. If you want to buy it, $25,000, $30,000, obviously, it's a capital expense, a capital item, I should say.
So, so let's just check with Stephen on that.
Because I thought it was 13,000 each year, that's what I...
Okay, I don't believe so.
And then, so, what I understand is that we did not have that initial 13...
Right, so now we're up to 26.
Potentially, but did we get the 13 in this most recent budget?
FY19?
No, unless he put it, unless he built it into his operating budget.
That's what we need to know.
Yeah, I have a question, I will follow up with him.
Okay, so...
So that's what the balance is? So there's $76,564 and 65 cents in stabilization.
In which?
Stable, regular.
Say that number again?
$76,000. And there's $65,000 in town hall stabilization.
Okay. So, are, aside from these things that are kind of on the wish list, Okay. So, are, aside from these things that are kind of on the wish list, is there anything else that we're missing that needs, your IT, you had some concerns with IT going forward.
Yeah.
I think we need more IT support.
Well, I'm concerned about the, the operating budget for 19 as well.
Okay.
I, I'm not comfortable with, um, it's $30,000. That is not just specifically for services, professional IT services. That is also our annual fee for the website. If we have issues with the telephone system, we pay for it out of there. So, I had requested $38,600.
So, so you would like, so another $8,000.
At a minimum.
At a minimum.
Right. And we're also looking at replacing, uh, three computers. That 38, 600 would include replacing three computers. I should just mention that we just had to replace the deputy fire chief's computer. We had not anticipated that. So, that will be a, a cost we're incurring in this fiscal year. And I was also made aware that the fire chief's computer is very old. So, if that does need to be replaced, you're talking about four computers.
Okay.
So, that's, yeah. So, that seems.
So, that's.
High on the list.
That would be high. Is there, is there anything else that we should be?
And so, we're talking about at least $10,000 for additional IT support?
Right. That's right.
So, I'll write that down.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, you were looking at, um, bringing that up to good, right?
The services, professional services, yes.
And how's that going?
Uh, actually, I, I met with the school IT, Paul Duval, last week, and he's reviewing the specifications that I put together.
So.
I have a question about the leak detection study.
Yeah.
I had heard that was 47,000. Did it change? Did it go down, Marlene?
This is based on information that came to me from capital planning.
I have a $50,000 leak detection and a $40,000 root prevention. And then a 96.
Okay. Well, this is what came to me recommended by capital planning?
Really?
Did you get a report?
From capital.
Minutes from their meeting.
Oh.
Not from Phil.
No, no. This was minutes from capital planning, that they were recommending these items.
And the leak detection is, my understanding is something that, is that the one that?
One's required.
Is required.
My understanding is the leak detection.
About $100 or something.
Yes.
I believe the leak detection is required. What was the other one, Paul?
I have root prevention for 40.
I'll go back and check their minutes.
For 50. And, and Phil did say, over the last few weeks leading up to annual town meeting, that there was a $40,000 figure. And so, that, that does ring true, although I'm not really certain as to exactly.
So, to me of those that, you know, since we could get penalized, that would be.
That would be important.
Pretty important.
For sure.
And I'd like confirmation. And certainly the paramedic equipment. I mean, if we're.
That's down to 13 when you get your seven right there.
Then we get our seven right there.
Yeah.
I mean, I know they're looking for jaws of life. I understand, but.
Has been looking for that for several years now, but.
That was recommended last year. The Board of Selectmen supported it. We just couldn't take care of it at that time.
Actually, somebody from the Finance Committee recommended a fundraiser because I think the last ones were, that's not the last ones we got. Somebody over there did.
Yeah.
I think people, yeah, I think we've done that.
Yeah. So.
So, some other things I would like to.
Yeah.
Have we gone through the list?
We're through Marlene's list.
Marlene's list. So, um, there are just three small things, but I think things that we've talked about every year and it just seems like we should say yay or nay to them, which is the increase that they, the Council on Aging has been asking for, for their director, which they said was dictated by a salary study, and, and it would cost us $4,160.
We said nay to that.
Did we vote it down?
Well.
No, because what I heard was, oh, well, maybe if we get free cash, we could do that.
Wow.
Well, you can vote it down.
On my list.
Salaries aren't free cash.
Yeah.
Well, it, no, it's a salary increase.
Yeah, but, but it's still out of free. It's, it's an expense.
Yes, but.
It's not just an annual expense. It's one that's going to occur every year from here on out.
I understand that. But the, the, the struggle was making that big initial jump. You know, who's, who has $4,000?
That's a quick, I mean, I think there's a question there though also of like, uh, do we have a good, does the Finance Committee have a good understanding of what else is in that salary study?
I have.
So, who else is potentially underpaid?
Okay. No, I didn't know.
You know, I mean, I don't know the answer to that question. So, before we go to free cash to fund $4,000 of salary for one person, uh, do we want to know what the potential is in terms of how many other persons are out there who.
And that's fine.
According to the salary study, should also be getting more money, you know? I mean, I, I guess I would feel differently about it if like, this is the only person in town who's being underpaid.
Right.
According to the salary study that we did, then maybe that's a different question than if it's a whole bunch of people.
That's fine. I just, I just want to remind everybody that we said, oh, well, maybe if we have free cash. So, if.
Remember saying that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, increase Board of Health agents' hours by four per week. Did we actually make a decision about that?
Yeah, these are like.
Yeah, we had made a decision. Well, well, unfortunately, we cut their budget.
Exactly. That's what happened.
That was the decision we made.
During the process, the one that those decisions are made.
And in theory, if, and I don't know if we, if, if that 1% gets reinstated to their budget, if that would help them. I'm sure it would help, but I don't know, I don't know if it would give them four additional hours.
Okay. And then the last thing on that list was an increase to the secretary in the Town Administrator's Office, which was $2,246.
Right.
These all fall under the same category of.
Of what?
We, we cover that during the budget process.
We said, we said no?
Because.
Okay.
Yeah, by default.
Yeah, and we understand the issue. I mean, there's.
Can I, can I just ask something to understand? With the Board of Health one, I just remembered the argument was that he's doing a lot more of the legal stuff and everything, but it was taken away. So, they said they didn't have to do it. So, is there any way to maybe redistribute that, number one? But it was to go from eight hours to 12 hours. And I did notice on the, the payrolls, going through them, you know, signing them for April and May, he was getting 12 hours already this year. So, I don't know if that's because there's a surplus this year or, you know what I mean? I don't have any answers, but I, I don't think we have all the information on that one.
All right. So, I'm happy to take them off the list. I just, they sort of got.
You know, not saying that, but I'm just saying there's a lot of questions on that one.
Yeah, and, and kind of goes back to the problem. How do we fund it? And if we fund it out of free cash, then we're, we're kind of destined to fund it out of free cash for consecutive years.
No, not necessarily. You could make other choices. You could reduce other things.
Yeah.
You know, you could say, I would rather pay the Board of Health agent more and spend less on new computers. I mean, you just, you make that decision.
Yeah, no, you're right. Yeah.
The, the question to me though is, it just personally, I, I wouldn't do it without like somehow incorporating the $54,000 that you just cut out of the budget, out of everybody's budget. Like, if you're going to do that kind of analysis, and I have no problem doing that actually, I, I think that you start from a place of, you know, we already took the $54,000. So, like, now, are, is our, are these really our priorities or are these just things people ask for?
Right. No, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, I think, you know, and given, given the $54,000 cut, do we go around and do we get input from other people about things they might want to see restored? You know, like, if that's kind of how we're going to go about it is piece by piece, that's fine. I, I just think we need more information. It shouldn't just, you know, I, I wouldn't want to cut somebody's budget without really hearing from them what that means in order to give extra, an extra budget that goes beyond to somebody else, you know?
So, so my question is, where is this salary study? Does anybody know?
Yeah. I was part of the committee.
I probably have it in.
You've got a copy?
I have a drawer of studies.
There's a report.
Jan, Jan, Jan Adamski's wife, Colleen, was, was the chairman. She's an HR specialist. She, she did a great job. Fran Gudgen was on the committee, Sandy Beldon. Myself. The, the prob, one of the issues with, with it is it was never fully accepted by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
You know, it was presented to the board and, you know, and I don't know if accepted is right. It just, you know, I, they're not officially using it.
It was certainly never implemented.
It was never implemented. Yeah.
And, and that's fine. And I take your point, Sean, which is, you know, you don't want to start picking at it in bits and pieces. I agree with that. But if, it seems to me at some point, as, as a town, we should evaluate the appropriateness of our employees' salaries and that that's a worthwhile activity. And so, I understand that this year we're cutting budgets. So, that's probably not a good year to do it. But I don't want it to fall off the list.
Right.
Should we get our finances in order again, I'd like to go back to that and say, okay. Because in my mind, I mean, just as a, as a philosophy of spending money, I would rather spend the money on, on the people than on other things, if we can do it.
If we can do it.
So, on a day when we have money to spend, I would like to review salaries before we start buying fancy new.
Stuff. Well, and it's, it's always been a challenge. Every time somebody leaves and we end up hiring somebody, we inevitably hire people for the same or more than the person that was leaving because we find out that's.
Had 10 years' experience.
Because we find out that's what the market is, is.
Requiring.
Is requiring. And it's, it's hard to know that. And so, you know, if the COA director left, we don't really know what it would cost us to get another COA director. And that's, you know, I mean, Jane does a great job, um, you know, but it, it's tough. It happened when Marlene left as, as administrator 12 years ago when I was on the board and we wouldn't hire someone else. And we couldn't hire anybody for what, what we were paying Marlene at the time.
Yeah. And so, that's why, um, before too many years goes by, I'd like to pull that salary study out and ask ourselves, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to spend money, where do we want to spend it? And I would rather spend it on salaries.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
I think the, the larger issue there too is, is the longer term. Because salary, salary as a topic and as an issue is a long-term.
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
Okay, any increase you vote, as I was saying earlier, this year, you're really voting that increase from now until Tuesday.
Forever. That's right.
And I think one of the things that Finance Committee's got to look at is not only just fiscal 19 and our ability to afford it or tweak revenues or, or whatever, to in order to do that, implement that, but looking ahead, you know, looking at the, the financial forecast for the community, unless we see some sort of windfall on the revenue side, you know, are we really going to be able to sustain those kinds of increases over the long term? The ones that might be warranted by the study that you guys are talking about.
Right, exactly.
So, it's a real, I think that's probably one of the reasons why these things never get implemented is because, you know, the outlook financially for the community is so tight.
And as we talk about sustaining things, can you pass this down to Mr. Fisher? For yourself? And for all of me? One, two, three, four. I worked on this with Edwina. Um, and what we tried to do was to put together how much we would be spending on paying off our loans. And so, the totals are across the top. So, you can see fiscal year 19, we expect to spend $426,681.93 on paying off loans. And then it goes across over the years to fiscal year 35. Um, and as you can see, it gradually decreases. Derek had brought to my attention that what many towns do is as things fall off the list, that's the moment when you take an opportunity to buy something you've been needing.
My concern about that is that if we continue to see $100,000 increases in the cost of health insurance, or whatever the benefits were that we were buying, um, that we, we, the only place we might get that money from possibly, short of increasing taxation or cutting budgets, is to allow these loan payments to decrease over the coming years and not put more things on the, on the list, to not buy more things through loans if we're looking for more money to pay some of these immovable benefits costs.
There's a particular benefit to, um, to jumping into a new loan right when one expires. I, I can't remember what that was.
You get a year's grace period, I believe. That's more of a treasure question, but I think when you go and get the loan.
You don't pay till the next year.
You don't pay for it until the following fiscal year.
That's right. That is correct.
Your grace period.
That is correct. Right.
What Betsy was alluding to was when you have a proposition, two and a half override of your, your loans, when they, when they become paid off, it's going to decrease your, yeah, your debt exclusion, I'm sorry. It'll decrease your tax rate. So, if you're going to, to get a, need a new capital item, it's at that point where it won't really affect your tax rate because you've got one coming off, one coming on. It's easier to sell at town meeting.
And those are the things outside the debt limit. Those are things under debt exclusion.
Outside that two and a half, yes.
Yeah.
But the only way you can access that for anything like what we're talking about would be to have an operating override.
Right.
Which you could do. I mean, you could try to, if something was coming off, we could try to get an operating override. And you're, you may have to eventually, somewhere or another.
Well, that's the thing. I just, you know, I, I don't know where to find more money. So, I was just trying to figure out if we're paying less money for loans.
Yeah.
Is that a source?
Right. And when you, and when you look at some of these things that are on here, I mean, just like, like water filtration out to FY 35. There's absolutely no way. You're not going to have to borrow more money between now and FY 35.
Oh, come on, Sean.
To fix that thing. You know, it is not going to last. Like, I mean, we've already basically been rebuilding a wastewater treatment plant.
Bit by bit.
By bit for like 15 years now. The only time that things are, you know, free from that is like year one through five. Then after that, we're fixing them.
So, anyway, I, I, this is my gift to you. Uh, and you might want to treasure it and maybe put it up in your refrigerator or something like that. But.
Does the Town Hall renovation, is that phase one and phase two?
Uh, I don't know. There was, there was only one. There's a Town Hall roof down below.
No, there's Town Hall renovation up above that was in, in the debt limit. And then phase two is outside the debt limit.
Okay. So, that's, I just picked off whatever Edwina had for folders.
Because we talked about that during the budget cycle where we wondered why the heck did we do the original Town Hall renovation? Why didn't we do that debt exclusion? We should have, well, but, so, in a.
So, we, I can update this.
Refinance it and.
Yeah. I mean, I can update this as time goes by and it's not immediately useful.
Right.
But if we.
No, I think it's very useful.
If we were ever to talk about, in the future, about taking a loan, or if we were talking about what Sean said, which is moving, what did you call it? Up, up?
An operating override.
Yeah, that.
So, basically taking a debt exclusion.
Right.
Moving it to.
So, that's Town Hall borrowing. I mean, why not consider, since we're obviously borrowing for phase two, why not consider refinancing phase one and with two and put it all under a debt, a debt exclusion?
Do it. It would be no time to do it.
Absolutely.
You've got, you have costs.
Absolutely. You're looking at millions of dollars at this point. This isn't a couple hundred grand.
Yeah, but we've already borrowed the money for the.
Phase two?
Phase two, haven't we?
I didn't.
We've already, that, that.
We're not paying on it.
No, she's going to be doing that in July.
Yeah.
But the vote already happened.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So, you would have.
Revote it.
You'd have to revote it.
Roll it all up into one thing. Absolutely. You have to revote it and maybe you can revote it at the end of this month. It's something to think about because, you know, to exclude that from, from two and a half.
Would be helpful.
It's pretty significant.
Save you $21,000. Well.
It's not a ton. I mean, it's $21,000. It's money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So, that's all I have to say.
Its effect on the tax rate would be pretty minimal. I mean, $21,000 a year, not really much.
And what would they have to cost the?
Refinancing.
Well, you're going to do a borrowing anyway.
Right.
So, you have all the costs associated with that already. I mean, you know, to add some money to it.
And, and amortization, aren't you paying more interest in the beginning than at the end? So, you're actually going to be paying more interest on that money by refinancing?
Possibly. And that's the, we have to.
Yeah, but how far into it are you now?
How far? I don't know.
Two years into it.
It was a 10-year loan. So, we're four years into it.
Yeah. Well, that's the other thing. You can roll that out into, what's, what's this current You can roll that out into, what's this current, is this 10 years or 15 for phase two?
Oh, that's three, phase two. I don't know.
I mean, so you can amortize the whole thing over a longer period of time if you wanted to, which would also help.
You know, philosophically, there is an argument to be made for that. Like, people 15 years from now who live in town are gonna also get the benefits of a renovated town hall. It's not just people who are here right now, today. So there is a, you know, I'm gonna call it for work.
So there is a benefit. Sorry.
Okay.
So there is a potential benefit. I mean, there is a reasonable explanation for that. It's not just
Betsy, I'm just curious, how much is the interest payment for that?
I don't know. I didn't write it down.
Wasn't broken out in interest, just the payment?
What's the total for
$21,000.
$21,000 a year?
Yep.
Is what we've been saying.
Yep.
And it's only a 10-year?
Yeah, I don't
No, that can't be right.
No, I mean
For phase one of the town hall?
That's what it said.
Well, it's off in FY '24.
It's off in FY '24.
And that's probably one of those things where I'm, I'm surprised at that also.
This is actually probably high.
10 times 21 is $200,000, and that's with interest. And that can't be right.
Maybe it was a longer loan.
We spent over a million dollars in phase one.
We got, we did get money from community preservation for some, I don't, you know what? I don't wanna go down that road right now. I wanna think about town meeting next week, and I'm thinking about my dinner.
Are you now?
So, we're going to be meeting next Tuesday?
Tuesday the 12th.
Tuesday the 12th.
People need to sign the warrant.
And so I think what we as a finance committee need to do is give guidance to what we think we would approve for articles for, you know, the special town meeting. And, you know, and I guess my question is, are we gonna let Marlene put an article for all these things on here or, cause, or which ones? I mean, right?
About how it breaks out? We need to come up with a
We need to come up with a determination. I mean, I
Did you do it now or then?
Now. Now.
Okay. So I would say everything on, under FY 2018 should be an article, right?
Yeah. Yep.
I would agree.
So that's school, transport shortfall, health insurance shortfall, Bay State Municipal Accounting, and IT support.
And IT, okay.
Right?
No, oh, no, we don't, no, that's not, that's not an '18 issue, that's an '90.
I thought that was a shortfall on '18, $4,000.
IT will be.
Yeah, but we
But we don't have to deal with that?
We don't have to.
Okay.
We can deal with that.
Okay. And then out of FY 2019, as an article on the warrant?
I mean, the actuarial study, that's $3,500. That seems pretty, pretty
And that's it?
You know, and I guess the question is, are we gonna support? I certainly would wanna, I mean, I don't know, I'm gonna throw out a couple things. I'm gonna throw out, you know, at least the stabilization funds. It would be nice to at least put those on the warrant.
Just in case.
Just in case. I don't know how much
You can have press articles and wrap them off.
Right.
In line too.
Right. Both of them?
Sure.
Both stabilizations, right?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know. You know, there's a part of me that would like to combine both stabilizations and just, we only need one. Why do we need two stabilizations? I mean, I don't see any benefit.
Didn't he say it was something to do with the handicap accessible people in Boston making it look like we were committed or, who was just saying that?
We're committed.
Well, we get 65 grand in the fund now. You all know how much we're gonna need until at least, we're gonna go out to bid at some point within the next several months.
Right. And that deadline, that deadline is September, so it's like, if you wanna show that you're still committed, I wouldn't break, I wouldn't combine them until after.
Yeah.
The deadline, or at least the
But we can only choose, we could choose to only fund the main stabilization right now.
That's fine. Okay, so stabilization fund, and then the rest we would leave for the end of the year?
Just combine the $50,000, not the rest.
Most of these spending possibilities?
The problem is we can't in order, we, we have to decide today whether we even want them on the warrant because if we discover in two weeks that we have X amount of dollars and we say, hey, we could fund X, Y, and Z, that ship has sailed.
So then Phil's 40 should be on there?
For the leak detection.
You put Phil's 40, I, I still think you put the ambulance, I mean, I'm okay with the ambulance.
You're talking about the paramedic equipment, 13?
No, the surplus that we need to return to them.
Sure.
The surplus, I mean, I, I, I
I agree.
I, you know, like to say we should reimburse the community preservation, but
Nope.
Maybe this fall.
That'll be in the fall.
Yeah, that's when you have
What, what do you, what do you think about the 350? I mean, it's only $25,000 or whatever.
I don't, do they, are they asking for 25 grand each year for the next three years?
No, it's just a CQ.
I don't think so.
They were asking 25 for each year. Every year.
That's what I thought I heard.
Oh, thank you.
And we're saying it as they went along. Because like I said, their kickoff is, just for an example, is New Year's Eve. But see, they've had already put money down, reserve a room, to reserve a van, to reserve, you know, those kind of things. So that's what they needed to start with, and they're hoping to make it back where they don't have to keep asking. But the plan is for each of the three years.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if you can give, maybe give them some money, 10 grand or something to get them started? Not that, but, and really the question is not the amount, is whether we're gonna, are we gonna put this, are we gonna recommend to the selectmen that we support it being on the warrant?
I guess so. They're asking for it, so we can decide what, if anything, then.
Okay.
Well, and for the purpose of the warrant, we don't have to have the figure in, an amount in there, right?
Right. So what about jaws of life?
Well, then, might as well be on there just in case, I guess, right? Well, then, then I, then I mean, I guess, why don't we put everything on the warrant that's not something that we're simply philosophically not willing to do, like possibly the $54,000, which seems to be questionable. And the 25?
25 what?
The COLA.
The COLA. Yeah, I'm not, I, you know.
Well, we could take it up again in the fall if we get
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we can. But we could, we could, we can put this, we could put all this on the warrant and then decide. And even if we get enough money, our decision may be that, no, you know, I'm kinda leaning towards Sean with the $54,000, I would just assume not
Right.
Fund that right now.
Therefore, the 25 on the COLA goes into the bucket.
Yep.
I mean, yeah, I would agree. I mean, and I actually, I mean, I have a philosophically opposite viewpoint of what actually wound up happening, honestly. I would have, I would have cut $75,000 or whatever we had to do out of the budget to fund some PataCOLA or, you know, half that or something.
Yep.
But I think that's a conversation for a budget process.
Right.
Not for a special town meeting.
Right, right, right. Right.
Okay, so we're recommending that we put on the warrant, the FY '18 budget deficits, the actuarial study, the ambulance surplus, the 350th anniversary, the stabilization fund, and the capital projects?
Yep.
All three capital projects?
Yeah, mine as well.
It's going there.
Okay.
Do we have a mechanism, like, just a curiosity, what's the mechanism that you get the money back for the 350th if they raise the money? Right. I was wondering that myself. I just don't know.
Well, it's going into a revolving fund.
Well, if they, if they get the money and they don't spend it, it would fall to free cash.
Should we, do town meetings establish a revolving?
We establish a revolving fund, yeah.
Yeah. So it could, could, could fall to free cash if they don't
So I got these things, this, 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 and this.
That did get spent.
No, are you talking both stabilization funds?
No, just one. Just the regular stabilization fund.
Regular stabilization.
In theory.
So I have one
So are we all on this, are we
Are we on the same page?
So there's eight articles here.
Are we all on the same page that right now we don't, that we don't wanna do the $54,000, even have the warrant article be on?
Yes, we can deal with that later.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah. Okay. Now, Marlene did talk about an additional $10,000 for fiscal year '19 for IT support.
Yep. I think we're gonna have to
Lydia, did you get your
Does that have to be solved now? Can that be solved in the fall?
We could do that in the fall.
Do you need that? Is that That's another one of those questions, though, unless you're telling me that next year, $10,000 less in IT support.
Yeah, they, I
You know, I mean, it's not a capital expense, it's not a one-time thing, presumably going forward, you're gonna need
Really?
Yes, right.
Yeah. Okay.
So I would feel really bad about not doing the COLA Well, it was for last year's budget process, but
And, and we're gonna tell the community preservation people that we'll wait, we'll get to them in the fall.
Yep.
Town hall generator?
Huh?
Does anyone know anything about that?
I, I actually do think we should put on
We could potentially give them something.
Phil has information about that. There is a generator he was going to get for the town hall.
Right. So, so I, yeah. Paul, are you
I'm on board with this, yes.
And are you okay if we put the community preservation as a warrant article?
I mean, it can be a low priority if we don't have money, but
Yeah.
Sure.
I think
I mean, it's a one-time expense.
Oh, I thought you just said you were gonna wait until the fall. But now you're maybe considering, oh, okay.
Let's put that
Well, we don't, since we have no idea how much money we're gonna have.
You know, in a sense, you know, how you, how you guys look at it, but, but community preservation money is really a stabilization account.
Heck, yeah.
It's our taxes, our tax money, you know, with some match, that's been being put aside for specific, really specific purposes. It's not on like the town hall stabilization account. So, you know, I think you're right in kind of looking at it as, you know, is this a must-do kind of thing? Because we need our tax money to be not paying expenses right now, so maybe it's something that they can do for a while.
And I, you know, they are very, the members on the committee are pretty committed to getting that money back because they, they watch that, that money very closely. They do a fantastic job, and so
Well, maybe what we should do is book it as a loan, an interdepartmental loan, because that's really what it is. Then, then you're
It's not
Then it's not an agreement.
It's a mistake. It's an accounting error.
Right, but, but to account for it
But it's already happened.
To account for it on our books, it might make sense to show the CPA or the CPC that, hey, yes, we are committed to paying you back and we're gonna treat it, we're gonna book it like this. Maybe Derek's got some suggestions on how to book it, but you can do that.
The only problem is, is those interdepartmental loans have to be closed by the end of the year. So you, if you put it on the books, you gotta fund it by the end of the year.
Well, I think we should put it on the warrant, see how much money we have, and if we're in a position to pay it back, we'll have to pay it back. I don't know where you're going.
Okay, so Marlene, you and I have the same list?
That makes nine articles?
One, two, three, four, five, six, I have seven.
But not putting on
Seven? Oh, boy. So all three capital?
All three capital.
Okay.
One stabilization
Stabilization fund, 350th, community preservation, ambulance
Surplus.
OPEB.
Yep.
And
Budget deficits.
The budget deficits.
So community preservation's back in?
So I had three
Yes.
For sure.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I'm counting nine.
Are you counting capitals three and separate?
Oh, yes, I am. I'm counting capitals, three separate articles, yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, nine.
Well, and actually, you know what? The fiscal year '18 budget deficit
Those three, those are all separate.
Yes, it's gonna be
12.
And what about IT? Is, oh, no, you told me never.
We're gonna wait till '18.
All right, good. So that's 12.
Okay.
12 articles.
And then the non-financial articles, that makes 14.
What is the legislative petition?
The Board of Selectmen received a request from the market across the street. We don't have any more all alcohol package store licenses available, and in order to increase the town's quota, we have to petition, we have to file a home rule petition, requires legislative body approval.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion?
For what?
To recommend this to the select board, these 12 articles? Or do we just do it?
Yes, no, no, let's, let's, yes, we need to make a, make a motion.
Are you good with this?
I make a motion that we recommend to the select board that the 12 articles we just identified be put on the warrant.
The draft warrant table.
The draft warrant.
Do I have a second on that?
Sure.
Second. Need more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
What is, you guys keep talking about a
We have a conversation with the Board of Selectmen if you recommend these articles going forward.
Why are you looking?
If there's additional free cash
There's additional free cash.
In excess of
They said though, you know, I'm going to take the direction from, from you and Ed as the order in which you would like to see them on the warrant. And, and again, depending on the money that becomes available, you may have to table some of them.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have to make that decision.
And what's our, what's our total now, then? And what's our, what's our total now, then?
We don't have a total, oh, as far as money here, I didn't bring my add in.
All right, so we're taking out...
So we're talking about eighty thousand for the eighteen budget deficit.
Minus fifty-four.
Yes, we're all set with you, we're still, we're still in such scoring. I do wanna thank you for your great work.
Do you need anything else from us tonight?
Baby picture?
Door.
I have that.
Of yourself?
Oh.
Oh, of the baby, I was like, wow!
The last, the last...
I heard stories about you.
Yeah, you've heard stories, but...
I saw him when he was little, I don't need to see what he looked like, I know what he looked like.
Hey, Remy.
Okay, so that's...
So I'm up to community preservation, that's a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. Now I'm at three-hundred-and-fiftieth, so call that twenty-five just to round off.
Okay, I'm just minusing what we didn't put in, I look at it that way, and then we'll see if we come up with something different. So I'm looking at minus ninety-four, two, two, that's it, so there's only two we're not recommending then, right?
Uh, let's see, we're not restoring the one percent.
The cola ones, right?
We're not doing the cola, we're not doing the town hall stabilization.
Right, I got that one.
And, and that's it.
The fifty, and those two, those three.
Oh, and the community preservation, we're not, wait a minute.
No, that's in.
Yeah, we are, yes, we are doing that, that's right.
All right, so we're only deducting like a hundred-and-nineteen, two-twenty-five is what I got.
Oh, oh, I see, yeah, that makes sense.
I did the opposite, there's only three to add.
That made sense, yeah, okay.
So what did you get for a rough total?
Well, I didn't finish adding, so...
So one, I'm just minusing about one-nineteen from that. Yeah, it was just...
Okay, so one-nineteen, you're backing off.
So roughly, we're coming out with about... So you got that there, Daryl?
What?
You got that there to show me?
Yes.
So three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand?
Yeah, I come up with roughly three-thirty-eight.
There he is.
Oh, he is big, huh?
Yeah, and there's a close, there's a...
Oh!
He was well-cooked.
Cute.
Isn't that great?
Oh, don't you just love when they grow up so fast?
So we come up, and so we're looking at three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. Yeah, we're looking at three-thirty-eight instead of four-fifty-seven.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back.
Congratulations and good night.
Okay. All right, I guess...
So a few things, the board's going to need to vote to have, hold the special town meeting. You'll have to vote to set the date for the special town meeting and the articles that you'd like to put forward on the warrant. Finance committee has recommended to the Board of Selectmen what they'd like to see go forward, and the board can also recommend the order in which you'd like those articles on the warrant.
Do we have to recommend the order tonight, or can we wait until next meeting? Do you need it tonight?
I, I would prefer it tonight, I'll just need, if you'd like to wait until next week, then I'll have to step out of the meeting and go organize them before you sign it. Because you have to sign it next week.
I mean, the finance committee did recommend an order, did they not?
I sort of did that.
Okay.
By, I have fiscal year eighteen is one, the OPEB budget is two.
Yep.
Three, stabilization fund, four, ambulance surplus, five, the leak detection study. Actually, paramedic and equipment could be six and seven, because they, at first, they were just saying the leak detection, then they had said the three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, so I had that as six.
Okay, six.
So, yeah.
But I mean, I mean ultimately, the town decides if they're gonna accept it or not, so...
Yes.
I mean, whether, I mean, putting them in order is nice, gives sort of an idea, the priorities, but the town basically decides if yes or no, so, I mean, and the finance committee did make a recommendation, so...
Okay.
I guess you need, you need two votes tonight, one to move forward with a special election, and the second one is whether or not we want to accept the finance committee's recommendation.
Correct.
Right.
That's correct.
So I'll take up the...
Special town meeting.
Three, yes.
What you guys get?
Ambulance.
The order?
Five, capital projects, that's right, six, or seven? Or seven?
Oh, that was fifty-five, one, two. Let's rewrite, okay, number one is two thousand eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Number two is...
The OPEB budget.
Actuary, right?
Mm-hmm. Three, stabilization, four is the ambulance surplus.
So, so that was four, yep.
Four and a half. Five is the leak detection study.
Yep.
Actually, while they're getting the list in order, it's town meeting, not town election.
Right, then number seven is paramedic equipment.
Okay.
Number eight, jaws of life.
That's what I have, but I skipped the seven.
Oh, okay.
You know, I'm in the exact same order as you, so, okay.
Okay. Okay.
So we've got a total of eight, right?
Right, but actually, these, that's all one. Those will be, actually, they'll be individual, there's a total of twelve altogether, as Betsy said.
Okay, but this is one A, B, and C.
Right, right. And then we have the non-financial articles.
Three separate ones, okay, yeah, right.
So we put all the funding articles up front and then the non-funding articles.
So whatever money comes through, we knock off what we can from the top?
Right, that's right, yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we'll take up is town meeting, and you were looking for a town meeting at which date?
Wednesday, June twenty-seventh.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to move to have a town meeting on June twenty-seventh. At, do I have to say a date, the time?
It's usually seven.
Normally, seven o'clock.
Yeah, special, special town meeting, June twenty-seventh, seven o'clock.
Okay, special town meeting.
Academy?
Actually, the cable TV managers recommended the elementary school. And it is available.
The town clerk recommended that you ask, but...
Yes, you did.
Okay, so at the elementary. Okay, seven o'clock at the elementary school.
Okay, I have a motion for the twenty-seventh at seven o'clock at the elementary school on June twenty-seventh. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion?
No.
Motion carries, okay. Now, the second item for discussion at the town meeting would be, do we wanna accept the finance committee's recommendation of the twelve articles that they presented, which will be, the town determines yes or no on these articles, and at that time, we'll actually know whether or not, or how much free cash maybe we might have, right?
Okay, we're down to eleven.
Is that what the anticipation is?
Are we down to eleven, right?
Eleven?
Items, correct? You have eight.
Actually, there will be.
I think we were at twelve, and I think we're down to about ten, the way you've got that.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, that's correct, and then the two non-financial articles.
Yep.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, yes, that's correct.